Good evening. Today is Monday, September 29, 2020. This is the Westwood Select Board. It's 5:00 PM. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23, 2020 Emergency Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this September 29, 2020 Select Board meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the Board. This meeting will be livestreamed by the Westwood Media Center. The public can view this meeting on the Westwood Government Channels, Comcast Channel 12, and Verizon Channel 42. The public is encouraged to watch our meeting via Westwood Media Center livestream and join via Zoom webinar as instructed below. The public will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during a portion of the meeting designed for public comment through the Q&amp;A function on Zoom. Every effort we made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings via technological means, in the event that we end up to do so, this video will be on the Westcat website within a day. With that, I will say that we are going to be meeting again next Monday, so we are going to skip over a Chairs update. We moved some of the topics that were going to be in Chairs Update to New Business so that we can have more of a discussion. And with that, I will ask if anybody other than Connor is recording the meeting, you let us know. Hearing none. Sarah, we're going to jump right into-
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion, so I understand Connor will disable me as a participant.
Connor, let us know we're ready.
He is now an attendee.
Okay. All right. Sarah Bouchard, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. I'm Sarah Bouchard. I'm the Housing and Zoning Agent for the town. I'm here before you scheduled to ask for your authorization for the Chair to sign the regulatory agreement for the two affordable units to be constructed on-site in the new homes at 45 on Abbey Road, the new constructed Abbey Road. I apologize for the last-minute change. Just in the last couple of days, since I put this on your agenda for the evening, I did receive a request from the developer to make some changes to the affordable units that would require us to make some alterations to the local action unit application, which you had already signed off on back in January or February of this year. So while I am pumping the brakes a little bit on asking you to sign that regulatory agreement this evening, I thought it would be worthwhile to just give you an update on the changes that have been requested by the developer and give you an opportunity to weigh in on them quickly before I bring them back to the Housing Partnership for their review. Assuming I get, you know, an okay from the Housing Partnership, I'll be back before you, hopefully in the next few weeks, for a signature on the amended local action unit application. Once the state approves that, then we can come back to where I thought we were, which is having you sign off on that regulatory agreement. You following so far?
I'm with you. I'm with you. It's not an easy process, we know.
I know, and it it sounds so much more complicated than it really is, I think. So basically, the changes that have been proposed by the developer are ones that I support. I don't think they fundamentally change what we're trying to achieve with the Affordable Program or what the approval for these two units was at the property. They don't interfere with the requirements that were set forth by the Planning Board in their special permit. So there's two changes that are proposed. One is relating to floor plans. So the developer's offering a number of different floor plans with these condos, and the is going to be a proposed shift from one floor plan to the other for one of the units. It does result in a slightly smaller unit, but really what the town is getting at when we review these, our obligation is really to make sure that these units particularly work when they're distributed through a market development, our obligation is really to ensure that the affordable units are not substantially different than everything else. So there's only two units in the development, so obviously the distribution of floor plans is not going to be representative or even relative to all the market units. But in reviewing the floor plans in the market units, I see no issues with changing the floor plan arrangement for this one unit. The other proposed change was to relocate the affordable units. And again, what a town is responsible for weighing in on when it looks at these proposals is making sure that affordable units are evenly dispersed throughout a market development, that they're not clumped together in a perhaps less desirable side or location in the property, that they're not otherwise distinguishable, they're not visibly obvious, you know, what are the affordable ones and what are not. So the proposal, as it was originally put forth, had the two affordable units, units 52 and 69, which were located across the street from one another at the curve on Abbey Lane, and this will move them a little bit further down towards the Winter Street entrance to Abbey Lane. They'll be a little bit further apart, which I personally like. I think it achieves a little bit more of that geographic distribution. And I'm told by the developer, it doesn't represent any delay in the affordable units coming online, which is a concern for us, as we want to make sure we get these affordable units up and running and added to the SHI as quickly as possible. So I'm told that actually, the location of one of them will result in an affordable unit coming online earlier, by about five or six weeks. So those are the changes that they've proposed. If you have any questions or any thoughts that you'd like to weigh in on that before I take those revisions to the Housing Partnership, I'd be open and welcoming to receive those.
Sarah, I had I had looked at the the plan. I was actually kind of surprised that 52 and 69 were so close together, that the two units were together. I know in the past we've tried really hard on multi-floor buildings to keep them at different ends of floors and really separate them. So I'm actually relieved to hear that. So is one of those original two staying? Are they both moving? Just-
Yeah, they're both moving. So instead of 60, 52 and 69, it'll be 65 and 75. So more of a distance between them. I agree.
Sarah, did he give a reason for the change?
I believe it had to do with the sales. I think the sales for the markets are doing very well. And as the developer was trying to manage the construction schedule, he thought it might be advantageous to stage one of the affordables earlier in the lineup so that he could show the others that not being my forte. I didn't ask too many questions, but-
But Sarah, can we just get a revised a revised map of-
Absolutely.
Like you did with the the original two?
Yeah.
And and then just going back to the math, it's been a long time since we've done this. By right, we were going to get six units out of this, and we wound up with seven, correct?
Correct.
In just a different manner.
Yeah, right, because we have five units in the newly constructed Life Works group home on Clapper Tree, and then the two affordable onsite units.
Michael, anything?
Yeah, how much is the difference, Sarah, between the old floor plan and the new floor plan?
As far as square footage goes?
Yes.
I believe it's a reduction by about 200 square feet.
In both of them?
Just in the one.
Oh, just in the one, okay.
And is it still a two-bedroom?
Yes. Yeah, so the bedroom size is all of that is still the same.
And so did he give a reason for the change of that, change in the square footage?
Just because of the location of the unit. So the floor plan itself of those two new units, so units 65 and 75, were, you know, already established in their master plan. So in order to move the affordable to another one, it was that floor plan already. He kind of hacked into the floor plan from the unit location.
I guess my question is, why last-minute changes? You know, that that makes me uneasy now that we already signed an agreement, and he knew what the agreement was, and now he wants to change it.
I can certainly get more context.
Okay.
And bring that back to you when I bring the-
I think one of the things to keep in mind, though, is once we sign off on it, and then the the Planning Board gives its conditions, it falls to you and the Fair Housing Commission to really work out the logistics of this. So we can get more of that, but I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Sir, is there any other change in paperwork that needs to be reviewed?
No. So the local action unit application references the square footage, and since that's a change, that requires re-signature by the Housing Partnership and the Select Board. The actual-
Okay, that's why I came back.
That's only referenced in the regulatory agreement, so I would have certainly brought that to your attention when you were signing the regulatory agreement. But the local action unit application needs to be redone because of the square footage.
Okay. Is there any other paperwork changes that I should be aware of?
No.
Thank you.
I mean, Sarah, I think, you know, we're meeting again next Monday, so maybe between now and Monday, just pull some of that together for everybody.
I can certainly try-
Does that make sense?
The developer and get some some background. I think that's a fair question, because the Housing Partnership will probably have those similar questions, too.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. Does that make, does Michael, does that work?
Yeah, that works.
Yeah, does that work for you?
Yes. Yeah, and listen, I can talk to Sarah offline.
Right.
We'll be fine.
Okay. All right. So Sarah, we're not going to take any action on that then tonight, okay?
Correct.
We will see you next Monday.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, actually, we can't see you next Monday. We will see you the following time we meet, because I will only be a Board of One if we take this up next Monday.
No. No, Michael, you're going to be here next Monday, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, you are. That's why we're moving. I'm sorry. We'll see you next Monday. I had Mondays backwards.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll see you next Monday.
Do you want to bring Nancy back in now?
You got to text her.
On her way back in.
Yeah. Then Connor, just bring her back in.
She's back in right now.
Thank you.
Hey, we're going to move on to the extension of allowance for outdoor service. Nora, I'll turn it over to you.
Hi, thank you very much. So the Select Board granted three specific alterations to existing licenses, two for alcohol license CVs and one for standalone CV over the summer. I think it was back in June. The three businesses involved were Kiara, The Toast Office, and BB's Cafe. All three of those needed extensions or extent extensions of their seating area to allow for outdoor seating so that they could serve customers better during the pandemic. And especially when the when the extensions were first granted, outdoor seating was the only possibility for a little while there. So the Board granted those extensions through November 1, 2020. The state has recently extended its allowance for Board to have outdoor seating for a longer period of time. The new period of time that's in the the local state guidelines is 60 days past the end of the state of emergency. Your alcohol and CV licenses all run through December 31. So I would like to request that you take the Kiara's license, the Toast Office license, and the BB's license, and extend their permission to have outdoor seating areas through the end of those licenses, which would be December 31, 2020. And then when you renew the licenses, you can determine then whether outdoor seating would be appropriate for a longer period of time in 2021. Now, for a practical matter, we're in New England, winter's going to come at some point, and I don't expect these restaurants to necessarily use their outdoor seating through December 31, but I think it's best to give them the ability to do so if they think it's appropriate and if their customers are interested in sitting outside. So I ask that you make those extensions on those three existing licenses.
I would just say, I think those three establishments are working so hard, Nora. So I'm glad we're trying to do this for them. So, you know, I'm I'm fully behind you. I'll turn it over to Michael and Nancy.
I'm just curious, have they asked, asked us about this? I'm happy to do it, by the way, but-
They have not. They've all expressed gratitude for you allowing them to have outdoor seating in the first place, and it's been very active and very much appreciated. I think that they're probably not thinking of using them beyond November 1 because of the likelihood of cold weather, but I just think it by giving them that possibility, we may have some warm days in late November, or they may end up putting up heaters that allow them to use the space for longer. Anything they they do in that regard would be in compliance with building and fire code requirements. So all that would be needed is just permission through the issuance of a an amended license that gives them the ability to have outdoor seating through December 31.
And if they don't already have the heaters, I'm not sure they could source them now if they tried.
That may be, that may be true. Yeah.
Well, I was like, I was like Kiara Saturday, and I think he's bought four of them. He was telling me-
Okay, because if you go online and look them up, they're available in March for delivery.
It's good news, bad news. He's running to the store for propane constantly.
Okay.
Come on, we're hottie New Englanders. Put on a blanket and sit down.
I know. Okay, I'm willing to make a motion. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. I move we grant approval to extend the temporary outdoor seating licenses previously granted to Kiara, The Toast Office, and BB's, and we extend through to December 31, 2020 to coincide with the end of each business's current license period.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, Nora. And you are, you're up for the next one. Request for temporary reduction of alcohol and common vixter license renewal fees.
Right. So this is related to the first one, only it would affect all of our food establishments, all of the restaurants, ice cream shops, coffee shops, what have you in town. With our alcohol licensing renewal process, which begins in November for new licenses to take effect as of January 1, there are fees of $5,000 per applicant for the renewal of an all-alcohol license and $2,500 per applicant for renew of a beer-and-wine-only license, and then another $50 for the renewal of all CV licenses. Recognizing the the very difficult times that all of our food establishments are going through and their significant decrease in profits, the fact that many of them are actually running at a loss these days, we discussed as as a staff what we could do to try and reach out to these businesses and give them some form of assistance to allow them to come forward and continue operating in Westwood. And what we came up with is something that other towns are doing that we think would be appropriate in Westwood, and that's a 50% reduction in these fees. So rather than charging $5,000 for renewal of an all-alcohol license fee, we'd like the Board to consider charging $2,500 for those fees. For renewal of a beer-and-wine-only, we'd like the Board to consider a renewal fee of of $1,250 instead of $2,500, and for a CV license, we'd like you to consider a renewal fee of $25 instead of 50. So cutting all the fees across the Board in half for this one renewal period for 2021, and then reverting to the to the rates that are set forth in the in the Select Board's regulations for these alcohol and CV licenses going forward. So just a one-year reduction in recognition of the difficult times these businesses are having, and it's a way of really splitting the difference on on those fees. So we keep half of it and we we discount the other half.
From a revenue standpoint, we actually split the benefit or the the break, the benefit to the businesses, we split it between the second half of FY21 and the first half of FY22. So from a revenue source, it's it straddles two fiscal years.
So again, this this is something that was not requested by the businesses, but I think would be greatly appreciated for by them. And, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do to really change their circumstances, but this is something that we do have the power to to enforce.
Nora, so my question is, does this affect, I don't know, I'll say it right out before, Wegmans and Roach Brothers?
It does not. So this is on Section 12 license only. Wegmans, Roach Brothers, High Street Market, and Lambert's have off-premises sales licenses, which are under Section 15, so a completely different license. Those stores are probably doing as well as ever during the pandemic, but it's the it's the food services industries, the ones for onsite consumption, that are really struggling.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
And I'm curious, is Casa Loca open?
Casaloca is open, and, you know, I've been by there twice, and it's doing a booming business from what I can see. They are, they are limiting the number of people that are coming in to as are all of our restaurants to keep proper social distancing, but I've seen the parking lot full and plenty of people waiting to go there.
Almost a half a year later than they had hoped.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And the food is delicious.
Good to know. I'm okay with this. John, do you want a motion?
Sure.
Okay. I move that we approve a one-time 50% fee reduction for all annual alcohol and CV license renewal fees for the calendar year 2021. This temporary reduction is in recognition of the dire economic circumstances imposed upon local restaurants due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The one-time licensing fee reduction will apply to the 2021 licensing renewal fees only, and licensing renewal fees for 2022 will revert to those stated in the Town of Westwood's Rules and Regulations for Alcohol alcoholic beverages.
My only question is, Nora, do we need to put the section in so that it does not appear that it's all sections?
You could, you could add that if you want to amend the motion to say Section 12 licenses and CV licenses.
I'll amend my motion to specifically reference that these are Section 12 alcohol-
Licenses and CV licenses.
Yeah, alcohol licenses and CV licenses.
Okay, now I'll second. Thank you.
There was just, there was a question in the Q&amp;A. Nora, do you have any metrics on the actual reduction these businesses are seeing? And I guess Pam, I'm wondering, have we seen anything in the receipts on the meals at hotel hotel and meals taxes that would show?
Yes, we're going to look at that later, but we have seen the the meals was almost at about half for the most recent quarter we had as compared to previous to the to COVID.
Okay, so we have a motion. We've answered the question. Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I as well. Okay, Nora, thank you, but you're still staying with us. You want to get a brief update on Amazon?
Yes, very brief. I have had a brief phone call and a brief email discussion with Sherri Clancy from National Development. I reached out to her following the last Select Board meeting in the intent to continue negotiations and see if we could come to terms over what would be the most appropriate way to handle the facility without negatively affecting the residents. And I really don't have anything new to report, so there was no new discussion that took place, and I'm hoping that we have another opportunity to meet to to see if we can come to terms, but we have not yet.
Okay, we'll be talking about that in executive session, but with that, I think we'll move on. Okay, Nora, is that is that it?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're on to new business. Pam, you're up.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good to see everyone. We have kind of your standard quarterly agenda item to release a quarter of the capital allocation. So this is the request to release the second quarter of capital. It totals $454,220, and the list of items was in the material. As you know, each year with the capital that's approved at town meeting, we have our departments give us a schedule of how they would like to spend that over the four quarters of the year, and we come to the Board in advance of each quarter to ask you to release that before they go forward with their projects. We have talked before that most of our release comes in the first quarter, because most of the work, particularly school capital, is done over the summer months, when it just works better for them to get in the buildings and do their work. So this is a much smaller allocation, the $454,000.
Michael, any else get anything?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, I move that we approve the release of second quarter FY21 capital totaling $454,220 to the various noted departments contingent upon all procurement procedures and checklist being fulfilled.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you, Pam. We're on to FY20 Year End Review Financial Update.
Okay, that's me also. I have a brief presentation. I'm going to hopefully share my screen, and you can see that. Are you able to see that?
Not yet.
Nope.
Connor, Connor, can you help?
We're giving it a chance now.
Can you see that or no?
No.
Do you want me to pull it up?
I want to be able to advance it. Sorry, I thought I practiced.
We've done it before.
Do you want me to bring it up, Pam?
Wait, so if I do share screen, okay. I think I've got it.
You got it? You got it. There you go.
There you go.
Sorry. Okay. So each year, we come in and when we close out a fiscal year and just go through some of the year-end results with you. So we'll just go through this real quickly. Obviously, this year, we also want to talk about the COVID financial impact. So I just have a couple of items to look at with COVID, and then look at a couple of items with our FY20 closeout. So we had talked before when COVID first came upon us, and we were talking about our budget process and our our structure. We talked about that. Our town meeting has approved some very sound finances. We have very structurally sound budgets. We don't use one-time subsidies to balance our budget. We've been very conservative in our town meeting, conservative in our revenue budgets. We don't inflate our revenue projections in order to spend more. A couple of areas we had talked about where we our budget was structured differently than some other communities, so we were seeing separate results, included the meal and hotel tax revenue, that our town meeting had designated that to a separate fund. We don't apply that to the operating budget. Goes into a separate fund, which is going to be acquired to be voted out by town meeting, and we use that specifically for capital projects. We're also conservative in our estimates for motor vehicle excise, as that's a revenue that can be impacted during an economic downturn. We also use conservative estimates of our new tax growth when we're doing our budget projections. Our town meeting over the last couple of years has also paid attention to our reserve accounts. Those are really important, not only to our credit rating, but to helping us maintain services and provide those services during emergency. So our finances for the last several years have been designed to maintain essential services during a rainy day disruption, certainly what we have seen with COVID. So at our June 2020 Annual Town Meeting, and I first want to make sure to thank the Selectin and Chris Coleman for making sure we could have that meeting take place. I know it was very difficult to get that in, but that made a significant difference to us and our finances to make sure we had that meeting in before year end, so that we could close out FY20 smoothly and get FY21 in place and continue our town and school services. So at town meeting, we went through all of our revenue and expenditure projections with the town. We discussed COVID impact and how our budget was structured. We had talked about that the one open item we had was FY21 state aid, that the state had not at that time just done their budget process. We had talked about that if state aid was cut during FY21, we would have to have a fall town meeting. We would come back at a fall town meeting and be able to balance out the use of state aid or any reduction we saw with use of our stabilization fund. As you talked about at one of your recent meetings, the state came out, and even though they haven't done their 21 budget yet, they did guarantee that they would level fund state aid for FY21. That was excellent and important news for us and all municipalities in the state. So the state, I know, will be starting their state budget process in October, but they had committed that level state aid will be level funded. So our FY21 budget is balanced, and that was the reason we did not need a fall town meeting. So certainly, we had significant impact from COVID, significant impact to the town's school services. If we all remember back to March when everything started, it was an ever-changing situation. It kept evolving. It was difficult to kind of stay on track with that. You know, the schools- It was difficult to kind of stay on track with that. Um, you know, the schools uh at a certain point ended up going remote to end up the fiscal year. The town went to initially uh remote. Uh, and then we went to a hybrid situation where all of our staff has been uh either back on on site or rotating through a remote and hybrid operations. Uh, I do want to thank our I T department for all the work they did to allow everyone uh to get remote, to set up what we needed to be able to keep services going. Uh, and we have been able to do that. We've been able to continue services. And on a financial basis, we've been able with our financial departments to continue um fully operational, keeping up with what we needed to as far as all of our payroll, our bills, um, all of our uh collections. Um, doing what we needed to do to keep the town running. So we did incur additional costs, both the school and municipal departments through the period ending June thirtieth from the COVID impact. And those included public safety snapping impact. We had a couple of situations where we had uh COVID impact uh with our police and fire departments, where staff had a quarantine and we had a backfill to make sure that we were properly staffed. Uh, there was significant purchase of P P E and safety equipment, both town and schools. Uh, as I mentioned, additional technology calls to make sure we were set up for remote operations, again, town and schools. Uh, additional facility cleaning and maintenance costs, uh with all of the extra sanitation that needed to occur. Uh, and then our health department certainly got impacted uh with all of the extra work that they needed to do, some additional staffing that they needed to bring in. So for the period ending F Y twenty, so through June thirtieth, all of those items for town and school totaled about five hundred thousand dollars. We were able to pay for those items with two sources of funding. Uh, FEMA, which people are familiar with, kind of the emergency uh federal response, uh and CARES, which is the CARES Act. Uh, the federal government gave money to states um to help with the COVID impact. And in Massachusetts, they uh distributed some of that funds to municipalities. So we, between the CARES Act and the FEMA funding, um, were able to cover all of those costs that we just talked about about uh through June thirtieth. So that includes, again, town and school. So any of the additional costs, uh so for example, with the schools, I mean, the additional uh Chromebooks and technology costs that they had, they did not have to cover that within the school budget. We were able to cover that with this additional funding. I will point out, um, there was some other budget impacts smaller within each of the town and school budgets, and there were savings available to offset that. So for the schools, once they went fully remote, uh they really were able to shut down their school buildings in the late springs. They had some cost savings in those later months from, um, you know, the utilities and the buildings not being opened at all. Um, municipal side, we had some similar cost savings in departments. Uh, in the municipal world, most of the annual training, um, and kind of certification classes that uh staff have to go to occur in May or June. So most of those classes either occurred remotely or didn't occur at all. Um, so there are some departments that had savings in their budgets, uh because they didn't weren't able to attend some of these different things they normally will. Um, so all of those costs covered by that additional funding, either state or federal funding. For F Y twenty-one, those costs will continue. We will continue to see some of these um COVID-specific costs uh continuing for town and school budgets. Um, the CARES funding and the FEMA funding both run right now through a twelve thirty-one designation. So through the end of calendar year, we still have access um through that funding to help us with some of this cost. And again, that helps us not have to cover those costs within our regular budget operations. Uh, and I will mention there was some additional funding from the state specifically for school reopening. The the state distributed funds on a per um student basis, and Westwood received six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for that. So I do just want to follow up quickly here. I know the schools have been talking about the impact on your budget for F Y twenty-one. Uh, so we're in the current year. We were able to follow up with them on that. Um, talked through the use of the six hundred and seventy-five thousand, talked through continuing to have the CARES and FEMA funding available. A specific item, they have another about two hundred thousand dollars in technology costs as they look to reopen the schools uh and the remote uh operations in the fall. That two hundred thousand will be paid for from CARES funding uh and does not have to be paid from the school budget. One other item that the schools mentioned, um, I know they're gonna be following up with the school committee. Uh, they referenced the state circuit breaker funding. This is money that the state distributes specifically for some special education costs. Uh, there's some concern about will that revenue decrease in F Y twenty-one? And it may. The state has not gotten to that yet. But the schools have on hand as of July first, the full amount that they had planned to use for the F Y twenty-one budget. So if there is any disruption uh to the circuit breaker, we would look at that impact for F Y twenty-two, not for F Y twenty-one. So as we go forward with F Y twenty-one, both town and school will be dealing with additional costs from COVID. Uh, we will have some access continuing to the state money and the FEMA money. Now, just moving on to kind of just a couple of items we all uh look at every year on our regular closeout. So we're gonna start on the revenue side. Um, the pie chart shows our revenue budget for F Y twenty. Uh, taxes are about eighty percent of our revenue, very typical for a suburban community. Uh, therefore, it's the most important component to our financial stability. Uh, taxes came in fine for F Y twenty. The board will recall that you voted approval of a state program uh back in the spring that allowed our residents to pay their tax bills later. So the due date for real estate uh bills was moved from May first to June thirtieth with no interest or any penalty. Uh, so we had some residents take advantage of that. Uh, so some of our tax collections came in later uh in the cycle, uh but our year-end results were right on track uh and consistent with what we're um seeing in other years. So no disruption to our tax collections. Uh, we look at a couple of um outstanding items each year as of June thirtieth, our tax deferral program. That's an excellent program that offers seniors in town the ability to defer payment uh of their real estate taxes until they sell the home. Our tax deferral, the total amount outstanding for all years, not one year, but our cumulative total is at the end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty, five hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. We've shown some numbers here on the slide of comparisons to previous years. Four hundred and fifty-five thousand previous year, four seventy-five the year before that, four ninety-five. So we're right in the same ballpark. No real change with that consistent year to year. The other item we note, uh tax title, so that's any past due unpaid taxes. That number is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Again, that's cumulative, not one year, F Y twenty, but all years, all taxes uh that we've ever uh billed, there's four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the tax title process. You can see that that's right in line again with where we are in prior years. F Y nineteen, the year in balance was just over six hundred thousand, just over five hundred thousand, F Y eighteen, six hundred and fifty-four thousand in F Y seventeen. Uh, so just a couple of points to say that taxes were a main source of revenue for F Y twenty, closed out uh fine and consistent with previous years. Looking at another revenue source, state aid. Uh, state aid or budget for F Y twenty, six point four million is showing green on the bar graph. Uh, you can see by the bar graph that state aid's been very consistent for the last several years, no significant increases each year, but very steady. No uh mid-year cuts, no disruptions. It's about six percent of our total budget. Um, so an important revenue source for us. So we saw saw no disruptions. We received all of the money that had been budgeted uh for F Y twenty. Uh, the bottom of the slide, we're showing for F Y twenty-one, as I said before, while the state has not yet done their F Y twenty-one budget. We should see them beginning that uh within the next couple of weeks. They did make that commitment to do the minimum level funding um for F Y twenty-one. And again, that was a huge importance to balance our budget for twenty-one without needing to come into uh having a fall town meeting. Uh, one more revenue source, uh local receipts. Uh, this is revenue collected at the local level. The largest piece of this for us is our motor vehicle excise tax. Uh, our total collections for local receipts in F Y twenty, five point six million dollars. Compares, uh, you know, slightly down, but right in line with prior year of five point nine million. Uh, it exceeded the budget estimate of one point by one point four million. The prior year uh uh exceed budget was one point nine million. Uh, as I said, the motor vehicle excise is the largest category. Bar graph shows our motor vehicle collection for the last several years. So you can see F Y twenty in green, three point four million dollars, down slightly from uh previous year, but in line um right in line with where it's been for the last couple of years. The select board also uh accepted that state program that allowed people to pay any motor vehicle excise bill late. Uh, as long as it was paid by June thirtieth, people could delay payment of that uh without any penalty or interest. Again, some people um took advantage of that, but our collections by June thirtieth were fine. Uh, again, we point out with the motor vehicle excise, we do conservative budgeting, particularly so that we can have uh not not have budget disruption if we see a downturn uh through an economic downturn. Uh, looking at the motel uh meals and hotel tax revenue. Uh, so we've talked several times, our town meeting set up that this revenue goes into a special purpose fund. Uh, it's not used for our operating budget. It goes into a separate fund. It needs a two-thirds vote by town meeting to be used. The town has only used that for uh townwide um capital projects. The bar chart shows on each side the annual collection on the left for the meals tax revenue, on the right for the hotel tax revenue. Uh, F Y twenty, the year that's closed out is the rightmost bar. You can see there's a slight decrease from the previous year. And that is because we did see a decrease in that fourth quarter collection uh from both the meals and hotel tax revenue. So this graph on the bottom of the table shows each quarter what we receive for meals and hotels. We're showing you that the latest we've received is the June thirtieth collection. So the meals through the June thirtieth payment is fifty-eight thousand dollars. The quarters before that were about twice that, at just over a hundred thousand dollars. The hotel on the right side, uh thirty-one thousand dollars through June thirtieth. Uh, the quarters before that, uh more than double that, sixty-seven thousand or a hundred thousand dollars. So just a reminder, with both of these revenue, the state collects this revenue when they are collecting the state share of meals and hotel tax revenue. We, the state then distributes our share out to uh the communities. Um, the state has put in place, they are allowing the restaurants and hotels to delay the payment over to the state for for uh a period going forward in F Y twenty-one through May. So we're going to see some different collections going forward. When we look at data, we may not know if that's our actual revenue or if we're just gonna see a delayed revenue later. So I will point that out, that this is just gonna be a um volatile revenue source uh for the next couple of quarters. Uh, the potential volatility with this revenue source, though, is exactly why our town does not use this for the operating budget. So we don't have to rely on this coming in to support uh our teachers and public safety staffing. Um, so we'll have to see how this revenue comes in during the year. Again, goes into a separate account. We did not use any of this funding at the June twenty twenty town meeting. You'll recall there had been an article looking at some uh field and pool repair uh capital projects. That article did not go forward. So there was no money drawn out of this account uh at the recent town meeting for anything in F Y twenty-one. Uh, so the collections that all came in uh and with nothing coming out, our balance in this account as of June thirtieth was one point eight million. Uh, looking now at the expense side of how we closed out on F Y twenty. As we went through before, you know, it was a difficult year. That last quarter was difficult and a lot of work for the towns and school uh departments and department heads to manage their budget. Tried to uh absorb the impact and any additional expenses because of COVID. Uh, it was an ever-changing scenario uh and a difficult uh year-end close. Uh, but as I mentioned earlier, in the end, F Y twenty did close out fine, and our budget's on track uh because we did have the state CARES Act and the FEMA funding to help us with some of those more unusual, larger COVID impact. Again, for town and schools. Um, I talked about that even within the departments, there was some savings from uh trainings and other ongoing programs canceled, the school buildings being fully closed. And then the one other item that uh really the only good thing we had at the end of the year for F Y twenty was it was a relatively mild year for snow and ice for us. So when we look at our results, you're going to see that. Uh, we spent less on snow and ice than we typically did. We did not have to use any of the four hundred thousand dollars that the FinCom has in reserves. Typically, we use that to transfer, to supplement the snow and ice budget at the um annual town meeting, and we did not have to do that. Uh, we actually closed out a surplus in the snow and ice budget of a hundred thousand. Um, so overall, the uh operating budget was fine for F Y twenty. Just looking a bit further at that, so when we say close out, meaning we don't fully use the budget each year, which is a good thing. People are allocated budgets. They don't rush to spend every dollar. If there's a reason they don't need to spend uh funds, they don't. That money kind of closes out or reverts to the general fund. It's turned back. Um, the graph here shows you the annual turn back for the last several years. So in F Y twenty, we had approximately two point three million dollars turned back from our ninety million dollar operating budget. That's about a two point six percent uh of budget turn back. That compares uh in line with years before. F Y nineteen, one point four million or one point six percent turn back. F Y eighteen, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars or one point two percent turn back. So you can see that the turn back in F Y twenty was actually a little bit higher, and it really came in a couple of areas. We're gonna look at that. The table up on the right shows the turn back of that two point three million dollars by area. Municipal departments, school debt benefits, and shows the comparison of that same category uh to the year before, F Y nineteen. So a couple of items here in the turn back. Our benefits are fixed cost overall budget turned back nine hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Uh, that's really right in line with the year before, eight hundred and fifty thousand. So we every year have about a five or six percent turn back in that overall fixed cost benefits uh budget. Uh, which we need to do just because of the nature of that budget. That's what we're paying for our health insurance, our payroll taxes that can fluctuate during the year. If we had people come on and get on our health insurance, um, we need to be able to provide for that. So that's a standard turn back. We did have turn back in our debt budget of a hundred and twenty-three thousand. Uh, that's kind of an unusual one-time item. The year before was zero, uh and that's where we uh had anticipated we might issue some long-term debt, but we only did a short-term debt in the spring. Due to some of the volatility with COVID and the markets, we only went short-term, so we did not need that larger debt budget. The snow and ice, as I mentioned, we turned back a hundred and two thousand dollars due to the mild winter. That was unusual. Typically, we're supplementing and spending in the negative on the snow and ice. Uh, the reserve turn back, four hundred and thirty-two thousand. That was higher than the previous year, again, because we did not need to use the snow and ice. And then the municipal budget turn back in total was uh over six hundred thousand dollars. That was higher than normal. Our normal is about two hundred thousand dollars, uh really due to one item uh in our public safety departments. We had a turn back of about four hundred thousand. You'll recall that for F Y twenty, we added money to the police and fire budgets for additional positions, the final allocation of some university station funding to increase the staff in those departments. Uh, so town meeting in spring of two thousand and nineteen allocated additional funding for those positions. Those positions didn't get filled right on July first as the year starts. Just the nature of public safety, it takes a while to go out and fill those positions, have those staff trained, come on board. So some funds were turned back in F Y twenty, uh but those funds now in the budget for F Y twenty-one and forward will be full fully utilized because that staff is now um all onsite. Uh, so that's the expense turn back of the budget, uh the ninety million dollar operating budget. And just quickly, the snow and ice, um, which we've already talked about a little bit, but the graph shows the spending each year for uh several year period for snow and ice. The F Y twenty year shown in green, three hundred and forty-seven thousand. So again, you can see that twenty was lower than what was anticipated in most recent years. It's just a huge fluctuation every year, obviously depending on the weather. Uh, I will remind the board that in F Y nineteen, we had increased the budget to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for snow and ice. It had traditionally been uh lower. We had tried to build that up over a couple of year period because that uh more closely approximates our annual spending, our average annual spending. So that has certainly been helpful and worked out that we were able to do that. Uh, so again, in the Uh, so again, in the current year, we spent less than the budget allocation, turn back of a hundred and two thousand dollars. It also meant our FinCom reserve fund account turn back was higher because we didn't need to supplement. So the final item to look at uh, as we close out FY twenty uh, is what's called our free cash certification. So each year when we complete um, all of our work um, to close out a fiscal year, uh, the Department of Revenue certifies for every community in the state what they call free cash. Which is really, you know, a terrible named item, um, but it's really kind of the retained earnings uh, or the closeout uh, for each community. Uh, we had certified free cash of six point one million dollars. And that's really right in line with where we were in previous years. The bar graph shows a multi-year period, um, the blue bar shows what was certified each year for free cash. The green shows what we use uh, from that certification, what was applied to the budgets. It takes town meeting vote to utilize any free cash. I just wanna point out, when we look at this bar graph, we don't have this six million dollars every year, and it gets accumulated to an attitude. It's a new certification each year. So when you look at the bar graph and you see uh, the space between what was certified and the green, what we used, that means we didn't use all of the available funds. That now carries forward, and any closeout of revenue and closeout of expenses adds to that amount. So we get a new certification of a one-time amount each year at this time. I do wanna thank uh, in particular, Marie O'Leary um, and Kathy Foley and all of the financial staff for all the work that they do. Uh, there's a lot of material that has to be submitted to the Department of Revenue in order for them to close out your year and certify your free cash. Uh, and so it was really great that we were able to get this done. Uh, so as the board knows, this is an important funding source for the town. Uh, we did not apply those to operating budgets. We spend this money in compliance with our financial policies. Uh, at our most recent town meeting in the spring, we used three point eight million dollars of free cash for the FY twenty one budget, with three point three million of that for school and municipal capital, hundred twenty five thousand for stabilization, and three hundred fifty thousand that was uh, transferred into the school special ed reserve account. So this is an important funding source for the town, it's important with our financial policies, it's important with our credit rating. This protects the town, um, provides us with the funding for, to deal with anything that might come up, as well as for our capital budget. I, I will make sure to note that this is not a slush fund. Uh, if people uh, look at it like that, or call it that, or try to, you know, tell others that that's what this is, it certainly is not. Uh, we have now over a hundred million dollar budget. Uh, obviously, it's anticipated that there'd be some retained earnings at the end of a budget year, and that's what this is. So this was a great uh, certification, thanks again to the staff for getting that in. The allowance that we now have lets us go forward as we start in the FY twenty two budget. We could uh, keep with the same plan for how much we would use that the town meeting has done over the last several years. So that really completes our look at kind of COVID impact for FY twenty, a couple of key areas of revenue and expense for FY twenty one. Uh, really in a nutshell, while it got uh, crazy over those last couple of months, that last quarter, our year ended up closing out fine. Uh, as we go forth in FY twenty one, we're gonna have some of those same pressure points with the additional spending for town, school, for the COVID impact, uh, the PPE purchases, the building maintenance, the sanitation needs, the technology needs. We'll look again to maximize the available state and federal revenue um, before we have to go to our own budgets, town and school budgets to develop that. Um, so good to have the year-end closed, have it closed out smoothly. We did have our auditors onsite the last two weeks, so our audit has been, our onsite portion of the audit has been completed for FY twenty. Uh, all of that went smooth, again, my thanks to the town and school staff who uh, put a lot of time into that. Um, and this would put us in a position to be able to kind of move forward as we always do uh, later in the fall at your next meetings to kind of start talking about the year ahead uh, and what we'll see there.
Thank you, Pam. That's a lot of information, that's a lot of work, thank you for all of that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Still looking at the town of Westwood Seal, it's a beautiful seal.
Okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing. Okay, that's my first one, good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam, I know that's a lot of work, so I really appreciate it. Any, Michael and Nancy, anything?
Yeah, um, a question that relates to back a month ago or so, we talked about um, the good news that the state is committed to stabilized um, funding of state aid. And we talked then about getting a letter out to the community, we wanted to hold off be, before um, we made the decision on what to do with Fall Town Meeting, we've since decided to cancel Fall Town Meeting, and I'd like to renew my request, and hopefully the board supports us um, communicating to the town. Now Pam, if you put that whole presentation in the letter, it'd be several pages long. But, you know, I think what we just heard, and while we've heard this a lot, that presentation speaks so loudly regarding the strength of this town financially, budget-wise, staffing-wise, and we are so lucky to have Pam, her team, Chris, the leadership we have in Town Hall to make this happen, and it has been a rough few months, and to have a report like that is really exceptional. And I, I don't know how to get the word out to the public, but we, we are very, very fortunate. It doesn't mean we won't have hard times ahead because COVID's created an environment that is unprecedented, even though we've been through cycles economically, the sure is a, you know, rough road. But we couldn't be better positioned in light of these circumstances, so kudos to everyone, and I hope that the public at large, getting a summary letter realizes, we're, we want them to know the strength that we have and the hard work that will go into allowing us to move forward. And I think that the Finance Commission also needs to hear that message loud and clear.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you Nancy, Chris and I have been talking about trying to put something together, so let's, we'll, we'll, we'll make that a goal to do that for the end of the month, because I, I do think it's
Well, you got a day.
Uh, I mean, by the end of October, let me correct myself.
We gotta get it out sooner, I mean
It's been a long day, it's been a long day, but yeah, yeah.
To tell people why we're not having a Fall Town Meeting.
Right, right.
We don't wanna be too late in that, because that would have been the second week of November. But anyway, I guess people aren't losing sleep over that, are they? That was a rhetorical question.
No, I, Nancy, I will support you in that letter, I just wanna know, are you trying to segue into the next part of our agenda?
Me?
No, no. Oh, Nancy. I just wanna say Pam, you know, if, if part of it is, when, you know, when I first came on the board, it's, it's the entire conservative treatment, I mean, I see right now um, through MMA, a lot of towns are, you know, used to count money that right now they're, they don't have it anymore, you know, is, take the town of Brookline, they used to count their meter money in their annual budget, so you can imagine right now how much that budget is, is down because of
Most of them have covered over their, most towns have covered over their meters and aren't collecting anything, I don't know if Brookline's that way.
No, but there's no one talking at them, so if that was part of your budget, we'd be in a lot of trouble, so thank you to Pam, to your team for at least helping me get the guidance in the beginning to be very conservative in our planning, so.
Yeah, our town meeting has been very um, supportive of that, and it's really made a difference, um, and it that takes just a point every year at town meeting, and our town meeting supports that, um, and, and this year shows that. We really don't wanna be in a situation where we're always having to look to lay off police or fire or teachers. Um, and, and it's been helpful to, to not have to do that given the circumstances.
Hey, alright, thank you Pam.
Thank you.
Next up is our town administrative performance evaluation, and so the uh, annual evaluation of a town administrator is conducted in um, open session. And in Westwood, the chair from the previous year uh, presents that performance uh, evaluation, so Nancy, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, um, I just wanna ask, I know Joan is on, is, Joan, was there anything you wanted to say preliminarily, or should I just go ahead and do so? You're on mute.
Got a big smile, but we can hear.
Famous, famous words of twenty twenty years.
Unmute, okay, sorry about that. Um, I, all I would do is talk about the process, um, Nancy, that uh, that the process of collecting feedback on our town administrator, I talked to uh, a group of his management team, um, and talked to each of the select board members individually, um, got all that feedback and uh, put it together in a consensus review, so this is the feedback of a, a lot of people. Ready, Chris?
This is right. So I'm gonna start by saying that not many people in life have their performance reviews conducted publicly. But in our government circumstances, those who do include the town administrator and the school superintendent. And we have an obligation to conduct a, a public discussion review of our town administrator. And um, I'm happy to do the first one for Chris Coleman, who joined us at the end of November twenty nineteen. And in, in talking this through with Joan, uh, we felt that a performance review, even though it only covers seven months, because our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, that it was still very important to um, to do this. Uh, it's important for both Chris as our town administrator and for the select board to reflect on our expectations and how things have gone and set the stage for the next year. So with that, I'm just going to provide highlights, um, the, the review itself is more detailed and is shared with Chris, but I, I really want the public to know how pleased we are. Um, having Christopher Coleman as our town administrator. And for various expectations going into having a new town administrator after coming off of having a long established town administrator for thirty-two years. Um, we clearly could have anticipated a transition period that involved a, a steep learning curve. While there was a learning curve, I have to say that Chris blew us away with how quickly he assimilated into uh, understanding Westwood, so many facets of, of what we've been doing from economic development to personnel matters, to opportunities in uh, recreation, to budget issues, and then we decided we throw a real wrench into everything and there was COVID nineteen, so we wanted to be sure we really put Chris to a test. Um, we thought the weather that he had to deal with when he first joined us back in um, December, and not that we had big weather last winter, but we did have some storm events that always provide challenge to municipality to address. Um, but with the onslaught of COVID nineteen and uh, everybody needing to determine what the new means of operation would be for the town, both on the municipal side and supporting and working uh, with our school counterparts, Chris has done an amazing job, he is an effective communicator. He believes in dealing, tackling issues in a timely manner and in an inclusive manner. Uh, his team-oriented approach to working with town staff, citizens, uh, school department is very noteworthy, and um, his, his review reflects that. And when we hired Chris, while he hadn't been the town manager in Needham, he held a high position as an assistant town manager under a very well-established um, town manager Kate Fitzpatrick. And he had assumed many responsibilities in his years there. And that really qualified him for stepping into the lead role in Westwood. And I, I think we benefit by the proximity uh, Needham had to Westwood, and also being in that level of, of responsibility in the Commonwealth, he was very much aware of uh, things going on in the budgeting process and how Massachusetts works, so all of that he brought to the table, but I, I think it's his qualities as a manager, as a leader, and as a communicator, which stand out most of all. And while we didn't have um, the typical goals in mind going into the year that one might have with somebody who's working for the full year and already in the job, um, we really think that Chris has developed um, great rapport, uh, communication channels with members of the select board, with members of his team, with key people in the school department. He's really, that, that communication aspect was really forefront of my mind, and I know important to my colleagues. And uh, that's where I think when we look at goals, I mean, that was just something Chris knew coming in, that would be very important. And um, I will say, well done, and things we look forward to, um, there are important projects in town like the, the ongoing Islington development and uh, doing the reconstruction of the Islington Library and things that are very um, time-consuming, there are always uh, labor negotiation issues, and that's gonna be important going forward. And what comes up daily, um, with COVID, we are far from seeing the end of the tunnel on this one. Pam just talked about budget issues. It's going to be a different process uh, this year to anticipate where the revenues are for different items than we've um, had to consider in the past, and we just um, really look forward to having Chris as a full member of that process this year uh, versus coming in in late November last year. So um, bottom line is, Chris, we think you're doing an outstanding job. I, I have said to you personally, we're glad you found us, and we're really glad we found you. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll end and um, maybe turn it over to you, Chris, if you wanna make any comments.
Well, thank you very much, um, it's been a pleasure working um, with the town um, and with the team. I wanna thank the select board and the residents and the team for making me feel so welcome. Um, I would also like to especially thank the, the team um, for their dedication and what the residents, if they don't already know, what they really need to know is this is a tremendous group of hard-working local government employees who put the town first and are really committed to the residents, and I just wanna thank them for everything that they continue to do.
Thank you, John, for letting us, for me, allowing me to do that, thank you, Chris.
Well, thank you for taking the lead, Nancy, Michael, do you wanna add anything?
No, I think Chris knows how we feel about him.
Chris, I would just let you know that I, um, Joan and I met and um, to get some feedback, and I had read the commentary from the department heads and the chiefs, and they had kind of summed up my sentiments exactly. And I just give you a lot of credit, I think the engagement that you bring is, is just so impressive every day with residents and the employees. And like I said, the feedback was great, and for me, I will tell you that I, I think the other theme I had when I thought about you was accountability. I think in your own way, you set expectations for those around you, um, including the board, and so that's great. I think you've really brought some nice structure, and it's been uh, it's been great, and I look forward to um, more years with you as our leader.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay, alright, we will move on. So the next two topics, um, when we, Chris and Tish and I met last week, we had originally talked about putting this in chairs update, but I wanted to put this on the new business to really capture some feedback and thoughts. And COVID has impacted every aspect of life, and now we're entering the season where there's a lot of events and, and things that we wanna do. So I just wanted to throw out some thoughts, we don't have to take any action tonight. Um, and I'd be curious what people think um, going forward. There have been a number of inquiries to the town about what is our stance on Halloween. And so I'll start with Halloween, and um, Halloween is always one of those very interesting um, events, there's no statutory language, there's no specific bylaw. Um, towns in the past have moved the date of Halloween or instructed citizens to do certain things, and people comply. Um, some of the pros of um, quote-unquote cancelling Halloween is that it would be kind of in compliance with the CDC guidelines, which listed as a high-risk activity to go door-to-door, collecting candy, not tracking who you got what from, who you interacted with. The con is that this is on a Saturday night this year, there's a real fear that people will engage in activity in larger groups, uh, in closer proximity to each other, potentially indoors. So I think, Chris, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, um, if you're trying to channel my inner Jared here, I think it runs from the spectrum of we I think it runs from the spectrum of we, we do nothing, which is an option, and ask the people, exercise judgment and good judgment, and, and not take any certain position. Our fear is that it would lead to other behavior. The fear of leaving Halloween open as well is that if other towns start to cancel, will we get an influx of people? So there's just a host of issues surrounding that, but we would like to give some direction to staff on, on thoughts. Chris, am I missing anything on that, do you think?
No, you're hitting, you hit all the points. Yes, thank you.
So I don't know, Michael, Nancy, if you have thoughts on that. And again, I, I think one of the options really is ask that people exercise good judgment.
I do have thoughts. Well, I think Saturday is an opportunity to try to do something for the kids, because ultimately I think this is a special day for children. And that's who I think of first. I know we may have social gatherings because it's a Saturday that are beyond the children, but that's, that needs to comply with safety guidelines from the state. So I don't think it's open season to do anything anybody wants in terms of large group gatherings. One, one idea I have, it's getting a little late to execute it in that it has a little bit of administrative nature to it, is that if people would like to have candy that they give to children, we give them some guidance on how to do it, but we also say, if you want to participate, put a jack-o'-lantern cutout on your front door. So anybody knows that indeed you're hosting, giving out candy. Because I think there are a lot of people who may not want to and are concerned they'll have a lot of people coming to their door or whatever. I mean, the typical thing is leave your lights off. But we could be saying to people, let's do it at three o'clock or four o'clock on Saturday, because they're not, it's not the typical coming out of school that we are generally used to. And that people go out during daylight hours, and if they see this pumpkin paper cut out on the door, they know they can go up and trick or treat. And maybe somebody has the candy on the stairs or something if they don't want to, you know, we do, we, we encourage people to do safe practices. I know the CDC guidelines or something we were given talks about how to do it without a lot of hand touching. I don't know that we can put it at the end of driveways and expect that it will then be there for many people to go by. It might just disappear. And, you know, the, the problem of neighboring communities is a real one. And I think that at any point, if we find that we were an island, that we may have to say, we just can't do it. We can't be the place that everybody goes to. But until we get to that point, I think it'd be nice to frame it in a way that helps people enjoy the celebration, that we don't take that away if we don't need to. So that's, that's the thought I have. But in order to pull it off, it really has to be coordinated right away, because we need to get the word out to people and think it through. So that's just my suggestion.
No, I, I feel like I'm on the same kind of wave like the Jew, is, is trying to do something or not stopping something and just figuring out what that something is.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get some input from Jared and Chris. Michael, any thoughts?
No, I think it's unanimous.
Yeah, okay. All right. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Just to let you know that I know Jared and his colleagues had a meeting with the state, a virtual meeting with the state this afternoon. So I'm just waiting for an update from him, and I'm sure we can certainly provide the board with an update of that conversation and some of the guidelines or suggestions that the state is also providing.
No, that's great. I mean, we have, we have a couple of more weeks. We don't have a lot of time. We have some time. Okay, so that's great. So Chris, I think that helps, and we can talk a little bit more offline with Jared. I think for Veterans Day, obviously, we have a, we have a great event every year at the Veterans Park on, at Pond and 109. I don't know that we'll be able to advertise and have people gather. What I had talked to Chris about was ensuring that we have the park done up nice, put some wreaths that I usually put up for the event, and try to dress it up appropriately for the occasion. And people can go by and visit kind of at their own pace and at their own time without encouraging large group gatherings.
Is it possible to do something, I know First Parish Church has a bell. I don't know, I mean, people have to look into appropriate protocol, but if it could be ringing the bell at 11:11 AM, or having other people do things at that time in their space to, you know, pause and think of veterans and thank them in their heart and whatever they, however they want to, I would think it'd be nice.
Yeah, if we had St. Margaret Mary's and First Parish, you know, both ringing their bells at that hour, that time.
Yeah, you know, and just, just ask people to come up with their own creative idea, because there's taking a moment to recognize it is what's important, doing it in different ways during these times. You know, people have a lot of creativity.
I know some of the towns are doing like, asking for pictures of veterans and running it, you know, on, on Veterans Day on the television as kind of a from-home memorial, you know, or a thought process to, to the veterans. And maybe we could talk to Westwood Media Center about doing something like that as well.
Connor, are you in?
I think we'll be able to do something, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
So that, again, like we, maybe that's something, Chris, we can talk about Michelle taking on.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So Ms. Michelle Miller has communicated with the American Legion and talking about a, a number of different options, and the American Legion is having a meeting this week. And Ms. Miller will follow up with them. Some of the things that have, that were discussed during their conversation, similar to what the board is talking about, maybe having a moment of silence at, on November 11th at 11:00 AM. The bell ringing would certainly be a great indication. I can certainly share that suggestion with Ms. Miller. And I know that the American Legion, from my conversation with Ms. Miller, they would like to do something. So we're just trying to work to support the American Legion in their efforts to honor our veterans. And we'll certainly provide the board with an update.
If there's anything we can do, socially distanced, of course, but if, if, for instance, turning out at Veterans Park, and it's a very small number of us, but to lay a wreath or anything like that to, to do so, I I'm sure, you know, we would all do our best to participate. Something extremely simple and very limited numbers.
That would certainly be appreciated, and I'll share that. Thank you.
Okay, and then moving on, I, I had said to Chris last, last week when we spoke, if ever there was a year to put up a lot of, as much lights as we can around Town Hall and the police station and, and the Islington Fire Station, this is the year to do it. So Chris, I don't think we want to impede that tradition at all. And I would, I would have you direct staff to keep going with that.
You're talking about Christmas or holiday season.
The lights, you know, the lights that do every year. We won't be able to have the tree lighting ceremony. We won't be able to have that, but I think just a soft turn on whenever they're ready. I don't want us to forego that.
Okay, we'll do.
Does that work for everybody?
John, we might be able to do it like remotely, you know what I mean? And, and, you know, have it kind of live, like we do some of our regular meetings too. So might be able to pull that off at the same time.
No, I agree. It's good stuff. That's why I needed you guys. I don't have the creativity. And then lastly is the New Year's Eve fireworks. And, you know, again, I think it's a really nice tradition in Westwood, and I just, I think if ever there was a year we needed something, my experience is people kind of watch that from their homes. And so I didn't want to impede that in any way. I don't
I think we just have to know, can it be done for the people who have to plan it and be there? Can they feel safe enough? I think we have to get that input. I don't know proximity and all, but I think it'd be really nice if it can be done in a way that the community can still enjoy it.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, our interim Recreation Director, Mr. Richard Adams, has been working with the recreation team on the fireworks and looking at the protocols and the guidelines and working with our Health Director to identify what can and what can't be done. And right now it seems very positive on the things, on the guidelines and trying to have the fireworks. But we'll, like I said, we'll look into this, we'll continue to look into this further and provide the board with an update.
Great, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you both. I'm glad we could have that discussion. That wraps up New Business. Do we want to move on to minutes?
My favorite thing. Oops, did I say that out loud?
Yes, you would not mute it.
Yeah, no, I know I wasn't. I'm just looking at which ones we have, because I have all of them open. Is it August 24th, the first one, Tish?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Motion?
I move approval of the regular session minutes for August 24th, 2020.
I believe I have to abstain, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I will, I will second Mrs. Hyde.
Hi.
And I vote I as well, and Mr. Walsh abstains. We're on to meeting minutes for September 8th, 2020.
I move approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 8th, 2020.
Second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. Okay, let's see. We have some public input. Let me just see. If I can get myself to the top here. There was questions about the businesses that we answered. There will be, not on October 5th, but I expect at our meeting sometime in October, some sort of an update on Amoresco's solar projects in town. So that answers that question. What does the Board of Health recommend? Again, there's not a lot of, the Board of Health, for each town, looks to the state for guidance. We're hoping to get that this week. Is there a way for people to only trick or treat on their immediate street? I think that becomes the challenge, is how do we regulate it if we would were to do it?
Not everybody lives on a street they can trick or treat on.
Right. It's the influx of other towns start to cancel. It becomes the problem.
Mr. Mr. Chair, just to, just remind the board and those watching, the CDC has traditional trick-or-treating as a high risk. They have three different categories. They have low risk, moderate risk, and high risk.
Hey, I think we got that. Okay. Our next meeting will be next Monday, October 5th, 2020, at 5:00 PM, again via Zoom. At this point, the board will be going into executive session to discuss two issues. One issue is pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to ongoing litigation. And the second pursuant to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F and G, to comply with any general law for review of executive session minutes, both of which will have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussions were an open session. The board will not be returning to open session. At this point, I will take a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved for the aforementioned reason.
I'll second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi. John, before we go, John, before we go, there is another
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question.
It's a long one.
Oh, okay. 6:23. The agenda was expansion. It was shocking to hear how bad a neighbor was and didn't follow the time tracks. Okay, Ms. Rocha, we appreciate your commentary, and that is duly noted, and we will pass that on to Nora Lockman. And we will have further updates on this as our meetings progress. Okay, we now have a motion to adjourn into executive session. A second, Mrs. Hyde?
Hi.
Mr. Walsh?
Hi.
And I vote I as well. That is the end of our public meeting. Good night, everyone. Thank you.